Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order October 15th, City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome those who are here and who sit or are watching TV. And I would like to, first of all, call on Councilman Todd Pierceall for the prayer, after which if you join, please in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Thank you, Mayor. You bow your heads with me. Father, we come to you today to ask for your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions for the residents of Gastonia. Thank you for the beautiful weather we've experienced and the wonderful nation that we live in. We ask that you protect those that protect us, both at home and abroad, our military, our fire and police departments. We also ask that you place your healing hands as we remember those during the month of October for breast cancer awareness and also domestic violence. There are many, many residents and families hurting from these, and we ask that you place your healing hands on those. We also ask that you comfort those that are suffering due to the government shutdown. Political as it is, there are many families that are doing without services or much-needed items. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to have item C, please, the adoption of the agenda.
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Item D is approval of the minutes of both the regular council meeting of September the 17th and the regular council meeting of October the 1st, 2013. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much. Item E is the awards ceremonies and promotions, a proclamation recognizing Mr. Reeves McGlohan as Superintendent of Gaston County Schools, and the presentation is by Councilman Jim Gallagher. Chairman, may...
Superintendent McGlohan, please come forward. How're doing, sir?
It's good to see you.
Definitely. The city would like to provide you with a proclamation for all that you've done for our town and all. Just want to personally say thank you for it, because, you know, right off, we're going to start with that you've been in education for 43 years, so you could have retired at any time, but I just know you loved your job and really put your all into it, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Let me read this for you. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas, after 43 years in education and seven and a half years as Superintendent of Gaston County Schools, Reeves McGlohan will retire at the end of December 2013. Whereas, Mr. McGlohan began his career in education as a teacher in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools before serving 15 years as Deputy Superintendent of North Carolina Department of Public Instruction in Raleigh. Very nice. He came to Gaston County Schools in 1991 when he was hired as an Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and in 1996 he became Deputy Superintendent of Administration before the school board named him Superintendent in the year April 1st, 2006. And whereas, Mr. McGlohan's many contributions to education in the community, state, and national levels are numerous, he was chosen as 2001 Southwest Regional Superintendent of the Year. Very nice. I like that. And he was also named in 2008 State Administrator of the Year by North Carolina American Counseling Association. In 2007, he was honored with the Trailblazer Award by North Carolina Association of School Administrators for his work to enhance classroom technology, and in 1998, he received the Rotary International Service Honor. Mr. McGlohan, it doesn't say anything here, but I know that you increased the graduation rate here in Gaston County during your tenure.
Teachers did that, not me.
Very nice. And also, the grade point averages came up as well, which is excellent, and the test scores. Whereas, under Mr. McGlohan's leadership, Gaston County's campaign to put smart board technology in every classroom is achieving success, as well as many other projects and programs that benefit the students of Gaston County. I know you did the smart boards, but I think right now you're getting into iPads as well.
We are.
Now, therefore be resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby recognize Mr. Reeves McGlohan for his outstanding contributions and commitment to education and for his service to the community and all the citizens of Gastonia are urged to congratulate Mr. McGlohan on his accomplishments and wish him the best on his retirement. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gastonia to be affixed October 15th of this day, 2013, the year of our Lord, Mayor John D. Bridgeman. And just want to say thank you very much, Mr. McGlohan.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to say a few words...
Let me begin by thanking you for this honor. As the days get closer to my, ending my 43-year career, the memories become fonder and fonder. And I'm glad to share this tonight with my wife Peggy and my daughter Brooke, who is a graduate of our school system, and my granddaughter Elizabeth, who is enjoying her Cheerios over there. So we've got three generations here. Peggy and I came here 23 years ago. It's one of the best things that we ever did. When we got to Gaston County, we found a home and we found a place where we think that we've made a difference. But one of the fondest memories I have of my time in Gaston County is working with people like you. One of the things that I think is a hallmark of our county is that we have elected officials who believe in public education and are willing to the best of their ability to support our schools. And certainly, the Gastonia City Council through all my years here has been most supportive, and especially this council. I appreciate that. I appreciate my relationship with people like Ed Munn, and I'm looking forward to retirement, but Peggy and I are staying right here, and if there's anything we can do to help you, you please let us know. Thank you very much.
We're gonna miss you.
We'll miss you too, some days.
Good to see you the other day.
Thank you, sir.
Stay healthy.
I'd like to have a Cheerio. You know, between Reeves and Ed Sadler, I bet they'll have to buy a new chair when the new superintendent comes in. Those are two big guys. I wonder if Reeves plays the piano?
I would think, knowing his family, that there is a lot of musical talent there. But one of the things, though, you know, with Reeves and before him, Ed Sadler, what remarkable stability we've had here and very professional leadership with public schools. I was talking with Reeves, and he said the average tenure of a superintendent now is two and a half years in a county. And our county has not been torn apart the way you see other counties, and a lot of it has directly to do with Reeves, before him, Ed, and the kind of leadership that they have, very principled, professional leadership. We will miss him. I hope the school board does a good job in getting a replacement.
Totally agree. All righty. Thank you, Benjamin. Item F is the presentation. Captain Mike Smith, Gastonia Police Department, referenced the Sniper Conference update.
Mr. Mayor, Council, just one. Captain Duncan's gonna be assisting me with it. He's been involved in it from the start, and so, got a handout here I wanted to give each one of you.
Thank you, sir.
We wanted to come before you tonight and just give you a brief presentation, or a brief for this year's Sniper Conference. Start with, we wanted to thank you all for giving us an opportunity to do this. This came from an idea when the economy seemed like it was really down here in Gastonia, and the police chief at the time challenged us to reach out and find ways to help, not just from police activity, but to help bring the economy up and do things. Captain Duncan and I were talking about it, and we came up with the idea, there's SWAT competitions all over the country, but there's not Sniper competitions. So, we looked at it. We had been to Sniper competition here, another one in North Carolina. We thought about, you know, they've done a lot of great things, but we thought, you know, maybe we can do it a little bit better, or maybe we can do it a little different. So we started kicking around the idea. There was two stipulations we had when we started. One was, had to be a first-rate operation. Second was, no city money could be involved in doing this. This is the seventh year of the conference. Every year, the Economic Impact Study, which we don't have anything to do with, we go down to Gaston County Tour and Travel, and they punch their numbers and do their magic. And every year, the economic impact for the City of Gastonia is well over $100,000. So, it's a four-day event that brings in a lot of folks here. This year's event, we have 46 teams that are registered from 13 different states. We were getting phone calls as late as yesterday wanting to come to Gastonia for the Sniper Conference. We do our best to take and get everybody in that we can bring in, because we know that's gonna help the economy. As you can see, these are all the different states that are gonna be represented this year, and looking at it, I think the father's one away is probably from Kansas, and that's a law enforcement team out of Kansas. There's nine military teams that'll be coming in, and 37 law enforcement teams. We also wanted to give you an idea of sponsorship, because they're the ones that really pay for this, the sponsorship and the vendors. We have platinum-level sponsors, we have five of those this year. A platinum-level sponsor is $10,000 or more of goods that you have to provide to the conference to help support it. A lot of it's not, most of it's, of course, is not cash, but they give prizes, and that's what brings a lot of people in. USA Tactical, True Spec Uniforms, McCree Precision, and you can see the list there. Gold level sponsors is 5,000 to 9,000. Silver is nine, or is, we have nine of those, and those are 3,000 to basically 5,000. 19 bronze level and 24 vendors, and you can see the numbers there. We're expecting well over $100,000 worth of sponsorship commitment so far this year, which we're excited about having. Last year, the, you can see here at the bottom, we put the projected impact is gonna be over $100,000 for the, for the economy. We have 175 rooms booked right now in the hotels, all of them on Remount Road right now, and, oh, I'm sorry, 175 nights, not rooms, 175 nights booked at the rooms down, or at the hotels down there. And the Economic Impact Study for 2012 was $104,919,000. So, any questions?
When is it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
When is it?
It is the 20, October 23rd through the 26th, and you're all invited. We'll send you out a schedule so that you can look and see if there's any events that you would like to come out and watch.
Next week, beginning next Wednesday.
Where is it?
It's at the, it's at the range. Sorry.
While, while you're, while you're on TV, is there any particular events or days that would be good for the public to come to you?
Friday and Saturday are the main days for the public to come out and watch the event. We try to do those days more of reactionary targets, so that you're not just sitting there looking at a piece of paper and you really don't know whether they hit it or not. We use Tanner Ride as one of the targets, so you know that they hit it, it explodes on impact. So, it makes it a little more interesting for the public to watch.
And that's Friday and Saturday?
That, that would be on Friday. On Saturday is the obstacle course, and there's also public events that take place that day. There's BB gun shoots for children, there's pellet gun shoots for a little older, and then there's a rifle shoot that always takes place, and a pistol shoot that the public's allowed to shoot.
Mr. Mike, dear, then Ms. Craig, I'm sorry, he knows.
You have a lot, most of your snipers are shooting 50 caliber or what?
No, sir. They shoot Remington .308s.
.308. Do you have anybody shooting like the 1,500 yards, or you don't have that long, do you?
No, sir. We don't have a range that long.
Like the military...
No, sir. We don't have a range that long.
Sits back in their camouflage uniform, you know, covered up with the sights and shoot, knock somebody's head off at 1,500 yards with 50 caliber, that's pretty, pretty good shooting, isn't it?
That's a, that's a very good shot.
Ms. Craig?
On Saturday, when you mentioned that the public, there would be participation with public shooting, are there any charges to that?
There is. Do you know what the charges are?
The, the public rifle shoot is $15, I believe, for the first run, and $10 for each additional. You can run it as many times as you want to. The, the public pistol shoot is the same price, and you can run it over and over and over. In fact, you know, a lot of people, the folks that have won historically have, you know, ran it 15 or 20 times, and which is still a pretty good bargain, win a new pistol for, you know, for that money. But now, the children's event are for, all the children's events. The pellet rifle shoot, the 22 rifle or rimfire event, all that stuff is sponsored by the Gaston Young Guns and Clemson University, and it will all be free to, to the kids.
Mr. Keller?
You do have one long shoot, isn't it like 400 yards?
There will be one this year, it's 500 yards.
500?
Yes, sir.
And the kids' ages, like six, seven years old, can they come out and shoot?
Any age. The children can be any age. The, the folks from Clemson will be running the pellet rifle shoot, and we've had them, we've had them so little that they had to put something in the chair for them to sit on, so. And it is a competition, but your first target counts as score, and they'll let them shoot several times before to kind of warm up and get ready for that. And it's a, it's a fun event as much as anything, but it narrows down pretty quickly toward the end to the true competitors, and the majority of the kids come to shoot it just for the fun of it. So they can, they can shoot it over and over, there's no minimum age. There is an age split between the 22 caliber rifle and the pellet rifle, and I think that's 12 or 13 years old that they won't be able to shoot. If they're older than that, they can't shoot the pellet, and if they're younger than that, they can't shoot the rimfire event.
It's nice that you're, you're out there educating the kids on guns and the safe uses of them. I think the more they know about, you know, it's a weapon and how best, you know, the safe way to use it, I think the less we're gonna have tragedies in the future.
It's amazing, the, the participation that, that the kids get, the lessons that they get. The Young Guns, of course, you know, all of them been through various safety certifications, instructor certifications, things of that nature, and it ends up being a little mini class before everybody sits down, and it slows it down somewhat, but I feel like that's an important part of it. It may be the only safety lesson that child ever gets, you never know who you're, you know, who you're dealing with, but we really, really get some positive comments from that. And in my opinion, that, that's one of the best things about the conference, we're able to involve those children who may not otherwise get, you know, that kind of information, so.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Steve, do we have any returning teams that are either defending what they did last year or have been a number of years here?
Raleigh is returning, they're defending third place from last year. Plano, Texas was second place, and San Diego PD was first place. Neither one of those two, two teams could make it because of budgetary, you know, items, and we have several returning teams. The West Virginia teams are, are returning. The Connecticut team's a returning team. Mississippi, they've been with us every year.
Really?
The, the team from Mississippi sure have. The Massachusetts State Police, they were here, this will be their third year. I'm not sure if it's third year in a row, but they've been here with us three years. Of course, several North Carolina and South Carolina teams are returning. So, we get quite a bit of repeat business, and the ones that can't come back really, you know, really wish they could, and we get a lot of phone calls. We actually try to work with them on their, you know, their hotel rates and, and things like that, and see if we can arrange a lodge, and we've actually had some of our guys say, come on, stay with us, you know, so they can compete. So it's a, it's a pretty close-knit group, and one thing that I've noticed is the contacts they make, and of course, we felt like that was the most important aspect of it when we started this thing, that they just really reach out all across the nation with information. If something happens on the West Coast, or up in Alaska, or, you know, anywhere where we have people that, that are friends to the conference, we get, we get information on it. And, you know, this worked well for us, or don't ever do this, you know, those kind of things, so, which both are important.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that any time that, during these economic times, and we can, a program like this makes over $100,000 economic impact, it's got to be good. So, I commend y'all in the type of program that you're running out there, and it's a, it's a good thing. Anytime we can bring, and no city money involved, that even makes it better. Thank y'all.
Yes.
One last. One last question. For the public, if they want more information, where do they go? Do they call you, website? I believe you have a website, don't you?
We do have a website. It's www.gastoniesniper.org or gastoniswatt.org. We have both domain names, and they both go to the same place. If you look on the left side on the main menu and, and look under the 2013 event tab, everything that you need to know is right there. Directions to the range are on the website. You know, certainly there's phone numbers on there they can call, and the City Gastonia website also has a link to it, I believe, is up and running now. And, uh, public parking, one thing that we do need to mention, public parking will be there at the facility. When you come in off of Tulip Drive, there, right along the lake, there'll be public parking right in there, so you don't need to park anywhere and be shuttled, and, and we will, of course, shuttle you up the hill. And we will have some special provisions for handicap parking if that's necessary, but we'll pick you up right at your car if, you know, if you're handicapper, have some sort of special need, and drive you right to the event and, and let you out. And transportation runs constantly, so you won't be stuck there for any period of time. About every 10 or 15 minutes, there's a shuttle running.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Could I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
I want to give special thanks to all the city departments. This could not be done without them. Everybody in the city takes a part in this, and I want to make sure y'all understand it's not just the police department. Every, everyone of these sitting out here, the fire department, electrical, you know, everybody helps out. The county police helps us out, the sheriff's office helps us out. That's one of the reasons we're able to keep costs low, because everybody volunteers, you know, some people to help out with it, and so, it makes it a little bit less of a burden on us as a police department.
And it's worthy of mention for the, about the fire department. We've had a, a major medical concern every year, at least one, every year, and it's been handled within seconds for those guys. In fact, you, you hear constantly, you know, they just can't believe the response that they get when we have an accident or somebody injured, and, you know, certainly, we wish that wasn't the case, but in the nature of this business, it's gonna happen. Last year, we had an individual, we thought, we're having a heart attack, and in a matter of about three minutes, he was in an ambulance on his way to the hospital, and, and quite possibly saved his life. So, so everybody in the city, all the city departments step up and participate and, and help us prepare for it, and, and it's one big effort, it really is a citywide project.
Thank you both very much for that. I understand, Captain Smith and Assistant Chief Billy Thompson with the fire department, the, the next presentation is about the Habitat for Humanity House update.
This is another one, I'd like to thank y'all for, give us an opportunity to participate in, and I, I'll tell you this, I'm kind of selfish, because I started tracking, I went to a class a long time ago in Charlotte, Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department, and they were talking about how much crime takes place either on or adjacent to rental property. You know, that's not necessarily the case all the time, but homeownership has a big difference in, in crime. And we, we're starting to see that already here on Prior Street since we have started building these houses here. The sheriff's office, the fire department, and I think this is our fifth house, isn't it, Chief?
I believe so.
That we've started working on together. I have a, a small PowerPoint here that Chief just had put together, wanted y'all to see, and I'll just kind of run through it. We started this house on September 16th. They, we were trying to put it together in a couple of weeks, and as you can see, it's, it's on North Prior there. First day it went by pretty quick. Seemed like we were really moving along, and, you know, and it slows as you, as you get started, because it seems like the fast part is, is the beginning. And then when you get to the painting and all the small things, that's when it kind of slows down. This is the Wilson family that'll be living in this house? If I'm going too fast, just let me know. The first week, this is pretty much, most of this seems like the first week that we had got all this done.
In 2008, I guess, when the fire department got more involved with helping the PD with doing this, one of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to actually start installing sprinkler systems in the homes. So, our first sprinkler install was in October of 2008, I believe at the McCarver House. And since then, we've installed 22 sprinklers. Even if it's not a partnership with PD where we're helping out, any Habitat home in, in Gastonia, we go out and our fire marshal, Billy Glover, is the primary person who designs and lays out the sprinkler system. He installs it with the assistance of some of our other guys after some of the major constructions done. And once that's done, a plumber comes in, he, he'll set professionally. So we have 22 homes out there that were built through Habitat that now have residential sprinkler systems in them.
That's great. That's really good. Questions?
I just wanted to make, not a question, but a comment. I've driven by there on Prior Street, and it's amazing how good it looks now to, to see those houses and really great work. I want to thank each and every one of you that participated on that. Amazing how it's just transformed that street.
Habitat's made a commitment to that street. We've talked to them about it, and Ms. Harris is going to do her best to build houses all along there, which is gonna make a huge difference. We're already seeing a reduction in crime there. We, we've been putting a lot of effort in, of course, in that area, but it just, it just continues to improve as these houses go in, because the homeowners are watching out for each other now, so it's making a big difference.
They're good-looking homes.
They are.
They really are good-looking homes.
I would just like to say what a great role models that you men and women probably are to the neighbors there, for them to see that the police are good people, the firemen are here to help us, the sheriff's department are good people. And so, I commend you on, on being not only good carpenters, but also a role model for the, the neighborhood and for the children, especially in the neighborhoods, that see that you're, you're helping some of their families sometimes. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Just so you'll know, I'm a laborer. I don't know, I don't know anything about carpentry. I'm a, I'm a pick it up and move it, and I put it where you want it to go.
But you're part of the team. I generally just carry the shingles, or, I'm the same.
Well, it's gotta be done. Campbell?
Captain, I think, you'd agree, really, what you're doing there is one of the, really the essence... the essence of neighborhood stabilization. There have been studies all over the country that when we move from rental, abandoned, into homeownership, and you're seeing it, I think, right now, and I think it'll continue to really reap those benefits as far as reductions in police responses and an overall increase in the good of the neighborhood when you get those houses done. I think it's a great step you took.
I agree with you completely. We've seen that on Parkdale. We're also seeing that here. I want to say the last numbers I looked at is we're down about 20%, which is huge numbers for me, especially in the central district. I just, I wish we could do that on every street, so... But we're showing, we're getting some improvement there. We're excited about that.
Great. Thank you, sir. Yes?
Gentlemen, is this the 100th house that you're working on?
Yes, sir.
So, it started September 16th and a month's gone by and it's, when is it going to be done? Is it going to be done at the end of the month?
When I talked to them today, they were getting the stuff in. The only reason we weren't finished is because there were some items that hadn't come in yet that were ordered. And I was, if I'm not mistaken, they were going to be finished sometime today, at least they were hoping to.
30 days, that's, that's fantastic. Way to go.
Thank you both very, very much for your report. Appreciate y'all. Let me take just a second. The next item is public expression, but I'm going to go ahead and jump in and just read to you that, in case you haven't heard, the Aphenia, they have announced, and of course, to me, that's Wix. I mean, they bought in 2004, they bought Wix. They've announced today in a announcement that they're moving their headquarters from Ann Arbor, Michigan, to Gastonia, North Carolina. So, we'll be hearing more of that, I'm sure, probably, probably on the, it'll, it'll be out today and tomorrow. So, do you know more about it?
Mr. Mayor, I talked to them and welcomed them. They're, they're consolidating their operations and they will be leaving Ann Arbor and those folks will be moving to Gastonia. And this coming year, I think it's August, Wix will be 75 years old and they plan to have a big celebration for the headquarters and having been here in Gastonia for 75 years. But this move that you're talking about here really helps consolidate the operations. And we're just so grateful for a corporation like Wix and, well, it's really Aphenia, but I think we all call it Wix.
Yeah.
On One Wix Way, off Union Road. But yes, that's really good news, more economic development for Gastonia.
But will that be their corporate building, headquarters?
Yes, on Union Road.
Big enough?
They're going to move those folks into the Union Road operation, is what they said.
Pretty good. All right. Thank you. We could, I'd like to do that in a few minutes. Wow, that's great. Yes, sir.
As someone who's taken cars every now and then, maybe you may or may not know, Wix invented the oil filter. And every car has one today. So, that's a wonderful company that we have coming to our city.
I know, a little, it's happened around, I wasn't here when it started, but that, as Walt said, that's, that's Mr. Allan Sykes. And he had a son named Jack, I believe it was. Anyway, there's a history behind that, but it was W.I.C.K.S., I think, that ended up being W.I.X. Thank the goodness they started here. That's great. Okay, under the public expression, each person's limited to a total of five-minute speaking time. And I have one for Mr. Bill, my friend, Mr. Bill Starr casually dressed, and he's going to come up and talk about Toys for Tots.
Mr. Mayor, council, again I appear in front of you. Happy to say that the 2013 Toys for Tots campaign has begun. Over the next two weeks, throughout the county and the city, you will see the Toys for Tots collection boxes show up. Last year was our first organized year in a long time. We were able to collect over 10,000 toys and help over 3,200 children. This year, we plan to put those numbers behind us and do more, collect more toys, help more children. The mission of the Marine Corps Reserve is very simple, provide a toy to a child in need at Christmas time. Very straightforward. I've contacted many of those sponsors last year who have all signed up. I am looking for more individuals and organizations to assist. They can go to our website, toysfortots.org. They select North Carolina, select Gaston County, and that's my webpage where they can sign up online to be a drop-off point, to volunteer, or for organizations to request toys. Individuals who need toys should contact a local agency. One thing I learned last year that was very humbling was some families would contact me so often, I had their numbers saved in my phone. And on Christmas Eve, I called this one lady and I said, "You've contacted me several times about toys and you weren't at either of the pickup times." And she said, "We just didn't have the gas for the toys, to come pick up the toys." So, Christmas Eve, I found parts of this county I never knew existed, and every child got their toy. And I realized at that time, I can't expect families to have to come to me to get the toys. I need to get the toys out to the families. And that's what one thing we're going to be doing differently this year, is I'm partnering with every organization that will listen to me to help me in that endeavor. This year will be a great year. I'm excited about it. And I thank the council and the city agencies that have been so supportive of us last year. I will call upon you again this year. Any questions?
Bill, I just want to say that twofold. Number one, it's remarkable and amazing, and thank you, thank you for representing our country and wearing that uniform. But then secondly, is, is, I wish there were a lot of people just like you that would, certainly, that means a lot for that child to get that, that toy. I think what you're doing is one. In any way we can continue to help, we want to do that. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, sir. It'll do well. Okay, regular agenda. Item number one, traffic ordinance. Presentation is Engineer Rusty Boss. I'm going to let you go over those one by one instead of take, take a while. I read them. You just go ahead. The first one, of course, is deleting a flashing signal at Gaston Day School Road.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is simply in the process of managing the city's traffic system. We discovered a handful of, of maybe some outdated or duplicate ordinances that need to be updated and brought into, brought current. The first one involves, actually, it's kind of a grouping, and I'll bring this, I'll put this on the Elmo, so folks at home can kind of see. This is an overhead view of the intersection of Kendrick Drive and Gaston Day School Road. The first one involves flashers at, on Gaston Day School Road. It also involves stop signs at this intersection. Traffic circles simply don't operate with stop signs, they operate with yield signs. So, the first part of these is removing the requirement for stop signs at this intersection and instead changing the ordinance to read the yield signs in the flasher. The, the second part of this also, I'll switch this out, is our other traffic circle. We have two in Gastonia. This one is at the intersection of Second Avenue and Belvedere Street. And this one also still has stop signs ordinances. Simply when the traffic circles were put in, the stop sign ordinance wasn't changed, so we just need to go back and correct that. The, the last group, if you will, is, is a duplicate of traffic ordinances. And I can show you this real quick, too. This one is on Oakland Street and it involves parking restrictions on the west side. This is the side adjacent to the First United Methodist Church. I believe that's Roosevelt Tire, all the way down to Piedmont Charter High School on the west side. This is a duplicate. There's already an ordinance on the book that prohibits parking from Main Avenue down to Fourth Street on that side of the street. Just at some point in the past, that parking was transferred from no parking to parking to two hours, or from parking for only two hours to parking to not, not at all. And there was already an ordinance on the book. So, this is simply removing a duplicate. Parking will still be prohibited on that side of the street. This is just pulling unnecessary language out of the ordinance book. And, and with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions of Rusty?
Rusty, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
I know it's not listed on here, on your, your item here, but where South Street ends, right by Main, Main Avenue?
Yes, sir.
We have a traffic light there. How come?
That is, that traffic signal is legacy from a long time ago. I think that signal was there even before our, before the current railroad ditch was in place, when, when South Street went straight across north. Downtown used to, you know, have a lot of very, a lot of pedestrian, a lot of downtown traffic, as we're talking about before the malls were developed. So, the signals were put in place there. Right now, I think the main purpose of that signal, from an engineering perspective, is sight distance. There's a lot of limited sight distance with cars parking on the street and it just brings safety into a question of making right turns on reds or knowing whether or not your left turn is clear or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Ash, do we vote on this?
Yes, sir. One motion for all of them.
Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
That was what I would leave.
So, move.
Is there a second? Any discussion, any questions? All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
The item two, Captain Smith, I believe, resolution declaring radios surplus property and transfer in the same pursuant to the general statute, 160A-274. Phil and Nip, the chief, who's been called away. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, the police department switched over to 800 megahertz radios and our system is now up and operational. So, we surplused our 450 and we have some of, extra ones in inventory. We have some of them put back for emergencies, but the Ranlo Police Department is in need of some radios. After doing an inventory and then coming up with a fair market value, working with a radio shop, Chief was able to determine that these radios could be surplused and sold to Ranlo Police Department so that they could use them and put them back to, in service. And it's, you can see the numbers here.
Okay. Questions? Yep? May I still approve?
Sir.
Discussion? All in favor? City attorney's report?
A report, Mr. Mayor.
City manager's report?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, since this meeting's so short, I thought I'd spend the next couple of hours going through.
Yeah, well, enjoy.
No, I, there, there are just a couple of items I wanted to share with the city council. First of all, we got, we got a report just today that the Lynn Elmore with Cancer Services, the pumpkin pie run that was scheduled for November the 2nd has been canceled. They're not able to get enough financial support for that, so that, that will not take place. Next, I would like to pass out to everybody the invitation to go and visit our nuclear power facility at Kataba. There are two dates here, October the 26th and November the 2nd. So, if you are interested in, in touring that facility, I had an occasion to do that many years ago and it, it's really very, it's a fascinating tour. So, any member of city council that, that wants to do so, please let us know. Either contact Mr. Jakubzak directly or call us at the city manager's office and we'll be glad to coordinate that with you. I received another letter today and this, this, this is on the theme of economic development. And this is saying that the Daimler Warehouse Project, which is the expansion of the Freightliner facility, really doubling that facility, the parts plant, is finished. They thank us for all the good work that we've done with inspections. I'll leave a copy in your box so you can take a look at it, but it's complimentary. Shellco did the work. They said they're looking forward to working in Gastonia again. And for us, we really are very appreciative of Daimler making that investment here, again, maintaining its 1,200 jobs with Freightliner, that, our parts plant here. And that matters a lot. And you don't get very many of those. And maintaining and keeping your businesses here, just like we were talking about Wix, is so important. It's more important than even getting new, new, new businesses. I understand that we should be getting an announcement maybe next week on another new business coming to the tech park, but that's, you know, you, you never know, that's the, as soon as that announcement comes to me, it'll go to the newspaper and everyone else. So, we are keeping our fingers crossed and so we may have some more development there. And, yes, we started the United Way campaign. Each year, we do United Way campaigns. I'm not going to be shaving my head this year, there's not much point in it. The theme, the theme is lifesaver. And the, we're trying to get more participation from our departments and also the goal's $45,000. And then finally, I wanted to let the council know that last week, we had the, an emergency operations center program that, that we had at the police department. And what we did is it was directed by the fire department and all the departments of the city came. And we talked about a, an event. And we had that, the event was a storm that came to us. And so, we practiced what we need to do in the event of ice storms and hurricanes and those kinds of things. What this kind of an exercise was, was really just a walk-through where we started to talk to each other, had really good dialogue. The fire department did a wonderful job in, in leading us in that. But the emergency operations center is, is the police department generally. Sometimes we've actually gone out to Broad Street, depends upon what the, the exact nature of it is. But it's important because we, we provide the electricity for all of the, everything, from the hospitals to, to the fire department and everything. We, we have to be there whenever an emergency happens, our water plant, everything has to be operating. So, the Public Works Department, everybody was all there for, for that morning, and so we did some practicing. And we do that periodically, but just wanted to let you know that we are preparing for emergencies and will continue to do so as, as we go forward. And that's all I have, but I could, I could do more if you, if we want to extend it longer.
You've done great. I do want to ask you, well, good, I'm glad to see it here, too, because it's from you. Give us an idea on the work session with FEMA. I had written down six, you have written down six, but on the mayor's announcements, it's 5:30.
I believe that 5:30 is there, Jenny, for, for dinner. The, the meeting would start at six and there'll be some food there at 5:30.
Oh, well. Okay, thank you.
And, and along with that, this is really, remember our conversation about development in floodplains? And we would like to have someone from outside take a look and talk to us. What are other communities doing? What are the issues that are involved? So, here we have someone. So, everybody bring their questions. And this should be a good opportunity for us to have a conversation about our ordinances and our regulations and what best practices are. And, and so we'll just see where this goes. It's a good, good work session coming up, I think.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Quick question. What are we looking at, or maybe for Paul, what are we looking at as an increase in power revenue, if, if we have any rough estimate, on Daimler, their new facility coming online?
Paul, I don't know if you...
I don't remember what that was.
All right. Because it's, the way it was built, it is, it is really warehouse storage. But the way they have constructed it and what happened with the, the first plant was as they moved into it, they began to bring more equipment in over time. And so, the, the power piece of it may be larger as, as we move on, but it's not in of itself a big power user. Right?
Thank you.
All righty. Before we get to the city, city council reports, you folks, anyone that, we know them, any comments you'd like to make or just...
What? I'm sorry. School assignment.
We sort of thought that might be the case. Well, good luck. Well, good luck. That's great. We're glad you're here. Thank you. City Council report, Ms. Craig.
I would just like to ask a question about the emergency management session that you had. Do we ever have combined city-county emergency management meetings like that, where it's a combination?
We haven't had that city-county one for a very long time. I think I really only remember one. And it's been a number of years ago. Billy?
Can you just come up and talk about how you coordinate with the county in emergencies?
As far as the emergency operations center goes, this past year, it was approved and Chief Keith Watts has took over emergency operations, emergency management inside the city of Gastonia. He coordinates with Tommy Almond, which is the county emergency manager. And what we do is we try to keep that relationship going. And in the event of an emergency, we will pop up all our little areas that we need. And if it comes to it, then we would open the city EOC. And then at that point, as it grows, then we would fold into the county EOC and then go on state and work on from there. We have probably, I remember some time back, and it's been quite a while back, we did have an operation with them. Now, we do have normal or regular operations with nuclear because of the regulations from the NRC. We have regular operations with them that way with the county EOC. But as far as the city and county, we hadn't done it in a while.
Well, I just remember years and years and years ago, I thought there was some kind of collaborative on something like that.
When Jim Farr was the emergency manager for the county, we worked, we did quite a few that I can remember, but that was quite some time back.
Okay.
One of the first things that we do is we establish who the county liaison is. It used to be the assistant city manager. It is somebody who we then have as that direct communication link with the county. A lot of it depends upon the nature of the problem. And lately, we've been getting ice storms. And so, ice storms are something that really drives our electric department and Duke and Rutherford. And so, the county themselves are not as engaged in those particular situations. But there may be others that they're extremely engaged in. And fire department, police department are the day-to-day contacts, I think, with county emergency management.
Thank you. It was just a curiosity question.
It's a good question.
I went Saturday evening, my husband and I attended the Gaston Symphonic Band presentation at First Assembly Church. It was a fantastic presentation concert. It was free. They have a series that will be coming up during the year. So, I would just encourage anybody that's listening and also the council to certainly take advantage of the opportunities. They did a fantastic job, just a fantastic job. I also, along with, I'm sure, some of the other council members, attended the 27 Forever event at Sims Legion Park. It was a wonderful event, all day Saturday. It was kind of overcast, but it was nice to, it wasn't real hot or anything. So, I'm glad that they had such a successful event. And that's my report.
Okay. Mike, you?
No report.
Pierceall?
Just to comment on the 20, is it 27 Forever or Forever 27? I can't remember. 27 Forever, that event, and also the zombie walk we had in downtown. Both events were good, no problems. And I just want, while they're sitting here with Assistant Chief and Captain Smith, just thank you guys, even Paul with the electrical department. I know they get involved with that. There's a lot that goes on with these events behind the scenes. And to the general public, it just runs so smooth and there's never a problem. But if they only knew what went on behind it. So, thank you guys because you were split on those days, two different locations. But there again, not a hitch with either one of them. So, we really appreciate that.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. Mayor, was at the opening of the new hospital for senior housing. Councilwoman Craig was there and Councilwoman Todd Pierceall. It's in his district. It was really, really nice. It was great to see the living quarters. Really, you know, it's not what you think in terms of.
They're spacious.
Yeah, they're spacious and just very nice, very well kept. And they got 22 still available. So, just want to let people know out there. The other thing is, next Wednesday night, the least of these is having a 10% dinner. If you go to Tavern 24 and you get dinner between 6:00 and 9:00, they will donate 10% of the monies that they collect during that time towards the least of these for the kids of, foster kids of Gaston County. Last thing I have is Parkwood Baptist Church, the church I go to, had their 50th anniversary. And what I want to do is, they had given me some booklets and some gold coins for the council and to commemorate their 50 years of being there. Ash, I don't have one for you. I'll try to get you one. And Jenny, I'll try to get you one as well. And, you know, they had a service. They had M.O. Owens, who turned 100 years old. He preached the service at 9:00 and did a wonderful job. And the other gentleman that came in behind him was Ned Matthews. He was at the church for about 20 years and he preached. And they've only had three pastors. So, it says a lot about the church itself in terms of continuity. So, it was very eventful. I hope you like them. M.O. Owens was here two weeks ago and he just wanted to say thank you and this is his way. Right? And that's it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carroll. Thank you, sir.
I don't have a specific report, but I have kind of a question, you know, kind of had an opportunity to reflect upon the fact that we're kind of approaching the midterm of our terms on council. And I just thought we had the opportunity to, at some point in the not-too-distant future, maybe to create some sort of a work session or exercise in which we might look back and also look forward to the next two years. And I thought if the council was interested and the mayor was willing, that I would like to see us create some sort of a goal planning session or strategic planning session that we could. I mean, we all got our feet real wet now and I think we all kind of know, for the most part, how this city government works. So, taking that into account, I'm just wondering if you all would be interested in sitting down at some point and saying, "Okay, what do we want to get accomplished in the final two years of our term and put that to paper?" And, you know, I think in the budgeting process, it's really helpful for the city manager when the city manager sees the short-term and longer-term goals of the council because the budget can reflect those goals. So, if this is something that interests council, we can talk about it more, you know, in the coming meetings and set some time aside if, again, you all are interested in doing that. But I think, you know, things get done because goals are set. And if goals are set, then we have, you know, a direction in which to travel. So, just something to think about. But I'd like to see us, you know, work in that direction. We all collectively, as staff, as well as council and mayor, all have a lot of great ideas. And sometimes they come at us, you know, kind of helter-skelter. But if we can sort of collect them and then prioritize and see which ones are really doable and can be accomplished in this next two-year period, I would really think that that would be beneficial to our city. So, let's put our heads together and see what we can do to kind of work in that direction.
I'm on board, Dave.
Yeah.
Good thought.
That's all, yeah.
Mr. Campbell?
Actually, two things. One, directed toward Mr. Munn. I thought it was a real good October printout we got on the conference center for the amount of events that we're having there. But I see that the last couple of months, we have, the number of patrons has been, has kind of been left off. If we could go back and put that on again. But I think that this is, I guess, one of the most proactive months we've had there. I think it looks really good. And thanks for all your hard work. But I think that would also be interesting to see what the numbers are in addition to the patrons. Thank you. Second thing, wanted to commend our city attorney, Ash, for the work that you're doing on the donation box ordinance. I was fortunate to attend the International Counterterrorism Officers Association Annual Conference on the West Coast all last week. And I actually brought that up to the executive board that I think that's an area that we're going to see a lot of cities unfortunately are going to be looking towards to target hard in their cities in some regulation of those boxes. Certainly not to dissuade folks from donating, but only to make sure that there's proper placement and proper regulation of that. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank everyone. I will say very quickly that the, I think Jim mentioned the ribbon cutting at Highland Apartments. That was a wonderful affair. And I found out Sunday that the way, you know, our city manager, and he wears caps and all this, I think the way that the Panthers can win, I didn't see it. I didn't watch it. Now, every time I watched it, they sort of defeated. But I did go to the, sit in on the, while I was on the committee to nomination committee for the League of Municipalities up at the meeting that was in Hickory that I think had its order had been to. And I'm not sure who was picked today, but we, I know the committee of 12 did listen and I enjoyed that, enjoyed meetings, a lot of folks. Lastly, I would like to say, more on a personal note, even though I felt like I was maybe representing the city, too. Gastonia lost a real champ, a real believer in Gastonia last week in Red King. And I saw him at that, Brendan, you and I were at the new Super Save store. I saw him up there when they opened it. And I asked him, I said, I've known him forever, and I said, "You help so many people. You save so many people. You've brought the remains out of the water of so many people." They brought that up at the funeral. But he, I said, "How many children have you delivered?" And through the life saving gr- and it was, the minister said 18. I thought it was more than that. And some of the babies were named after Red King. But we lost a great, great person when we lost him. He was a hard worker and, but he loved Gastonia and he loved volunteer work. And I want us all to remember his family. So, if there's nothing else, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion here, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Good night.